Meeting December 2nd, 2020, 6 o'clock. Lisa, take attendance.
All board members are present.
Okay, we're going to number two, administrative appointments. First one up is Tina Kostic. First, can I get a motion?
I move Ken Vavruska, tell me if I said that wrong, be appointed as Assistant Director of Physical Plant Services with an effective date of December 7th, 2020.
Second.
Tina? Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Seconded.
So I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Ken Vavruska to Assistant Director of Physical Plant Services effective December 7th. For those that don't know Ken, he has been with the district for 14 years. Ken has served as an integral part of the Physical Plant Services team and heavily involved most recently with the acquisition, distribution, and planning of personal protection equipment as a result of COVID, as well as cleaning plans. He worked closely with Director Brian Goby and also past Assistant Director Bruce Coltman, whose shoes he will naturally fill. I congratulate Ken in advance of the vote, but I have to congratulate him.
Thank you, Tina. Any other discussions from board members? Okay, with that, Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Ken. Ken, do you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank the board, Bloomfield Hills Schools, Tina Bryan, the rest of the PPS team, the last 14 years of employment. I honestly couldn't think of a better district to work for. I'd also like to say thank you for the opportunity to perform in the role of Assistant Director of Physical Plant Services. We've had a lot of changes in our department over the last couple of months. We've got a lot of changes coming up in the next couple of months, but I'm honestly just excited to be a big part of the next chapter. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken. With that, we will go to 2B. Can I get a motion?
Yes, I'll make this motion. It is with tremendous respect and admiration that I move that Andy Geniak be appointed as the interim principal of West Hills Middle School effective December 15th, 2020.
Second.
Second. By Howard. Todd? Thank you. I'm new, Todd.
How's that?
That's good.
Okay, great. I also have the distinct pleasure to recommend Andy Geniak to interim principal of West Hills Middle School. And a little bit about Andy, he first began his teaching career at Lone Pine Elementary. He's mostly taught 5th grade and 6th grade in Bloomfield Hills, both at Lone Pine and over at West Hills Middle School. And during that time of him teaching, he also earned two master's degrees, one in curriculum and instruction and the other one in educational leadership. After earning his second master's degree in educational leadership, Andy became our assistant principal over at West Hills Middle School. And me retelling all of the initiatives that Andy has been part of would just, it's a very long list. And so I'm just going to pick two more recent ones, and one you'll probably be very familiar with. But the first one, I just want to talk about a little bit about Andy's important role with helping the district move into restorative practices over the last several years and really playing a key, really being a key player in that initiative and being very thoughtful in that process and helping make sure that that really came part of our culture. Also, even more recently, Andy played a significant role with helping with the bond initiative and planning with the scope and design committee, working with multiple stakeholders, putting together some of those plans that we now know very well. And that was probably one of the joyful, most joyful moments and projects that I got to work directly with Andy on over the last few years was the amount of work that went into that scope and design process and the passing of a bond that is going to give us an incredible school district and really help us improve those facilities. So congratulations, Andy. I'm happy to be here to recommend you to the appointment of interim principal for West Hills Middle School.
Any other discussion? Okay, with that, Jennifer?
Hundred percent yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Absolutely, yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Andy. Want to say a few words?
For sure. Thank you. Wow, it's, those that know me know I'm a pretty emotional person. So just to know, nearly half my life has been spent in Bloomfield Hills now. I started as a 23-year-old kid and I sit here as a near 44-year-old and think about what life has given me and what Bloomfield Hills has provided for me, you know, over the past 21 years of my life. And I've been very fortunate. I'm very thankful to the board. And thank you, Todd, for the kind words you shared there and really for all the opportunities I've had over those 21 years to grow into who I am today as a leader. And, you know, I just, I can't think of a better place to be than Bloomfield Hills. And I feel extremely fortunate to be continuing to work with the families of West Hills and the kiddos of West Hills and really get to, I believe, play a very crucial role in the next two and a half years as we go through the reconfiguration within our district. And, you know, to continue to provide that sense of belonging and maintain that community feel over the next two and a half years. I am very humbled, blessed, and thankful to have this opportunity. So with much appreciation, thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Thank you very much. We will go now to 2C. Can I get a motion?
I move that Carrie Cracker be appointed as the direct district assessment coordinator and data specialist. Carrie will continue to serve as principal at Eastover Elementary School until such time as a new principal has been hired and a plan is developed ensuring smooth transition.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we've got multiple seconds, but I think Jackie was first for the record, Lisa. Todd?
Well, this is certainly enjoyable. This is going to be just as exciting to recommend Carrie to the position of data assessment coordinator for our district and to join the learning services team. Carrie has 25 years of experience in education. She's been a teacher at multiple levels and she has been administrator, I think, for about 10 years now, with the most recent position being the principal of Eastover Elementary School. She's been in various districts and we have been extraordinarily proud of her contribution to Eastover and the district. Carrie has multiple degrees. She has two master's degrees, one in as a reading specialist, and then she also has an educational specialist degree in educational leadership as well. And Carrie's been part of several different academic initiatives throughout the district, whether it's data analysis. Most recently, you've heard about the FastBridge adoption. She was a shoulder partner with Wendy on that initiative, as well as for Fontis and Pennell a couple of years ago, including data analysis, school improvement processes. Probably one of the most enjoyable experiences that I've had with Carrie is not only her leadership as a principal and her contribution in that capacity, but also when the district really moved into having a renewed focus on literacy. And we decided to move back into a workshop approach and almost relaunch that work. Carrie did an incredible job helping structure a lab classroom, visit several different elementary classrooms, part of a small team with Kimberly, Mary, and Liza. And really, that comprehensiveness on that type of need assessment for literacy, particularly at the K-5 level, was instrumental in us moving forward in those practices. We're really proud of Carrie. We are really excited to bring her leadership into the learning services team. Everything from Title I to reading recovery, reading first, being part of the Michigan Reading Association since, I think, 95, 1995. So Carrie has been part of several leadership organizations. She was most recently, I think, just a couple of years ago, invited by Harvard's Project Zero to present or be part of a Cultures of Thinking initiative. So we're really happy to have her joining the leaders, the learning services team, and thank you for your contribution over at Eastover. And she won't be going far, so she'll certainly be helping support Eastover through a transition, like you heard in the announcement. So Carrie, I'm recommending Carrie for a position in learning services.
Thank you, Todd. With that, we have a motion and a second. Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations, Carrie. Like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Paul. I think my heart is racing because this is coming real now. So it's been a dream of mine, of course. So I just want to say thank you, Board President Paul Cullen, Board Trustees, and Superintendent Watson. Thank you for your support on this. I'm really humbled, excited, and grateful for this opportunity to work as the new district assessment coordinator and data specialist. As you know, and maybe you've heard about me already, I have a sincere passion for school improvement and database decision-making. I'm thrilled to take on this role and all the work that lays ahead of us, especially when you think about the bond work and what's coming for us. I want to thank the learning services team for a rigorous interview process that led me here today, and I'm glad to be successful on the other side of that now. And I want to thank them also for their support during my time as elementary principal at Eastover the last six and a half years. I want to thank the administrative team for their encouragement throughout my time here. I feel like nothing we do in education anymore can be accomplished alone. I think that there's always a great team surrounding any leadership role in education. Collaboration is truly the key to success. I want to thank the Eastover staff and families for the wonderful support that they have shared with me and have always shown me. During my time here, Eastover is really a special place. It was my home away from home for years. It was truly like family here. It does make me a little sad to leave, however, I'm happy to know that I won't be far away. Obviously, one of my fondest memories is receiving the National Blue Ribbon of Excellence in Education. Some of you may remember that process we went through in our famous lip dub video. This was made possible by the amazing team here. It wasn't done alone. It was really a group effort that included all stakeholders and community members. And I feel honored to have been the principal here. I sincerely look forward to serving the district in this new capacity and supporting everyone. I look forward to continuous improvement to keep Bloomfield Hills one of the top-notch districts in the state of Michigan and providing the best we can to all of our students. I look forward to working with all of you and serving all of you to the best of my ability. I look forward to collaborating with everyone. And I'm going to end with a Walt Disney quote that is currently in my office and will continue to follow this as I truly believe it. And it's that all of our dreams can come true if we only have the courage to pursue them. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Congratulations again, Ken, Andy, and Carrie. You're welcome to stay or welcome to leave, but I'm sure we'll be seeing, you know, more of you. So if you want to exit, again, congratulations to all three on your administrative appointments. With that, we will pass it over to Pat Watson, who will talk about, give us a COVID-19 update.
Thank you, President Cullen. So, good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. And we'll get started with the first part of the presentation in just a second, which is going to be our COVID update. David, one more slide, please. All right, so the first thing we're going to talk about is the weekly COVID-19 report that comes out from the Oakland County Health Department. There is one that came out probably about 30 minutes ago, but we're going to go with this one for right now. We weren't able to make that change. But a couple of things we're noticing as far as trends, that in the lower age group, 0 to 4, 5 to 9, and 10 to 13, those numbers seem to be pretty much the same as the last report. Having peeked at the report today, those numbers in that age group are down. Now, talking to quite a few healthcare officials, they remind me that those numbers are down for potentially a couple of different reasons. One could be lower because they are asymptomatic or have fewer symptoms, or because they're not quite traveling as much as the older students in older grades or as adults where the case rate numbers are quite a bit higher. Next slide. So looking at hospitalizations from the last time we met, you can see they're right about 4,000. So we've seen a slight increase in the number of patients that have gone in since our last meeting, but we've seen a little bit of a dip when it comes to those that are critical at this time. Next slide. So looking at the seven-day rolling average of daily new confirmed COVID-19 cases, we've seen a little bit of dip. I know we've all watched the news and looked for updates. There is anticipation or expectation that numbers potentially are going to go up because of Thanksgiving holiday. And if people were together during that time, again, we'll keep track of that. These are daily, you know, data points we check daily. Right now, we're starting to see the trend come down just a little bit. Next slide. Looking at Oakland County, and as far as what's going on in Oakland County, looking at two of our key indicators. One is new cases for 100,000. So we've started to see a dip there, a decrease. But then looking at the second indicator, percent positive, that data is basically the same as when we had our last meeting. Next slide. So the next two are dashboards that are put together by Brown University and the school superintendents and principal associations. And so this data continues to build from when it first started in August. There should be another update coming soon. So total number of students that are being tracked are over 3 million. And there are over 1.5 million students that are in school that are part of this data set and over 537,000 staff that are in building. Next slide. So what, and we're part of this group that submits data as well. What we're really trying to do is see how often transmissions take place in school. So the data suggests right now that transmission in schools is lower than it is in the community in which schools are in. And it also keeps track of whether or not there's a school outbreak. And just for clarification, two or more cases with a link by place and time indicating a shared exposure outside of a household is considered a school outbreak. So it's not 10, 20, 30, 40. It's simply two that are considered an outbreak. So this is something, and you can kind of look at the number of participants as far as students and staff, which is going to be the graphic on the right. You can see the numbers were small early on as far as how many people were involved as far as submitting data, and that continues to go up. Next slide, please. Even though we are virtual, anytime we have a case that's reported to us of COVID, that automatically gets updated on our dashboard. So I've received a couple of emails asking whether or not we're still keeping track of that data. We are. And so please submit so that we have that information and we can keep track. It is very helpful. Next slide, please. I shared this last time. MI COVID Alert, a lot of states have put these in. It's just another way to keep track if you've been potentially exposed. Again, our goal is when we return to in-person learning, to make sure we can mitigate exposure as much as possible. This app allows the user of the phone to know if they've been in close contact with someone that is COVID-positive. So again, it's just another one of those opportunities to mitigate the transmission of COVID. Next slide, please. Thank you. And that is it for our COVID update. President Cullen, you're muted.
Oh, no, I just unmuted myself. If anyone has any questions or comments, and I can't see you because the presentation's up, I don't know if you want to take down the presentation, just indicate in the chat. Jackie?
Yeah, I just have a question, Pat. My understanding that because we're on Thanksgiving break, that does affect the testing and the data. Do you know anything about that?
I do. There is an update by Michigan Department of Health and Human Services today. And again, looking at what's going on nationally, the expectation is we should have really good data in the next two to three weeks that will show the impact of Thanksgiving. Testing sites were open, but were not at full capacity. Also, in the tri-county area, additional sites have been added. And I think it's important for the community to know because you'll hear that, well, if you go to, you know, Walgreens, they're packed, there's not enough, their facility can't hold how many people that are trying to get a test. There are other options. So another thing to do is reach out to Oakland County Health Division and find out all the different testing sites that are available and the hours that are available. So yes, is that dip going to continue? We don't know, but we'll be able to follow it on a daily basis as numbers keep rolling in to see what that impact's going to be.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we will move now, Pat, to the metrics update.
Thank you, President Cullen. So I'm going to spend a little time talking about updating our indicators. And so let's go to the next slide and kind of go back to where we're, where were we August 20. On August 20th, as we were working through different models and trying to make sure we have some type of guidance as we open schools, we landed upon the Harvard model. We adapted it, made some additional changes. For example, we put it must be at least three weeks in the lower phase before it takes effect. One day increase reassessed the timeline. A lot has happened since August. And so I'd like to share with you what the team has worked on as far as updating our indicators. Next slide. So our leading indicators have always been the seven-day, you know, seven-day moving average of cases per 100,000 and percent positive. What we're trying to look at are better practices based on guidance locally, nationally, and internationally, while at the same time, make sure we stay consistent with our primary metrics or indicators. And this is exactly what we had on the slide before. Another thing we've learned, again, looking locally, nationally, talking to our international partners, is that the concrete evergreen thresholds, they're different, you know, they're difficult to achieve. A great example of that is the recent update by Governor Whitmer and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, where they targeted based on data what they were going to close. So restaurants were going to close, high schools were going to close, you know, based on the data they had. And so we're looking to make sure that we use our indicators to impose targeted school closures, making sure that it's based on the data we have. So this would change that three-week time period. And again, we put that in there so that we weren't flipping and flopping. We're one day in, we're two days out, we're three days in, we're one day out. And so if you kind of go across the color band, so less than 10 cases per 100,000 based on seven-day moving average would be more in-person, 10 to 25, 10 to less than 25, reassess strategies to determine appropriate balance of in-person and remote learning. If you look at less in-person learning, 25 cases per 100,000 based on a seven-day moving average. This is updated with the latest CDC guidelines. It kind of mirrors a little bit the Oakland County Health Division and what they've done. I know Kent County has just released some really good guidance as far as reopening schools as well. And it kind of falls in line with that, where you're looking at it based on individual data points for whether it's building or age groups and making your decisions that way. Next slide, please. We've also talked about our decisions being multifactorial. And it's been a long time since we've talked about that a little bit, other than in generalities. And I know a lot of the community members that have reached out to me said it would be very helpful for them that really if we could, they get there's going to be many secondary indicators, but if we could focus some time tonight on really what those secondary indicators are, so everyone knows. So these are four of the top ones. One, number of new COVID-19 hospitalizations per 100,000, the population, looking at a 14-day average. And we're looking at a couple of things. We're looking at direction of change, and we're looking at speed of change and how quick these indicators are going. Looking at the number of students quarantined. For example, if 80% of a class had to be quarantined, then it would make more sense for that class to be remote and not have 80% at home and 20% in-person for back. Look at the staffing capacity. We've talked about that before. We'll talk about it again tonight. If that's, if the capacity is quickly going up to the point where we can't staff, that would make a decision where we have to close a class, close the building. And the COVID-like and influenza-like illness, just kind of keeping track of that. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services on their website keeps information on that. So that's another indicator we'll be looking at. These aren't all the secondary indicators. We want to talk about it being multifactorial, but these are some of the big ones that we're going to look at and then share as needed. Next slide, please. David, if you wouldn't mind returning to the main screen, please.
Yep. So while we wait, if people want to put in the chat, if they have any questions or comments, all right, I see the main screen. Just raise your hand. Jennifer?
Hi, Pat. Yeah, this, just a couple of quick questions. In the metric, it says, the secondary indicator, it says number of new hospitalizations. Are you going to use what's on the Oakland County data sheet, which is the percent of new hospitalizations to, you know, arrive at that number? Or are you looking at a different source for that?
We're looking at two sources. We're looking at the Oakland County Health data, and we're also looking at the data that's provided on our dashboard that looks at hospitals overall. So we'll be looking at both data points. Obviously, it's more imperative what's going on in Oakland County than what's going on in Genesee County, because most people are going to seek hospitalization or hospital care here. But we also want to see what the trend is throughout the state. So as many data points as we need to look at, we're more than willing to look at.
And so we're not distinguishing, when we talk about hospitalizations, we're not distinguishing whether patients are in intensive care or not. They're just, they're hospitalized. Is that right?
We are. So the slide that we showed earlier, that's also on our dashboard, let me find it, that shares a couple of different things. It shows patients that are in the hospital, not in critical care, that's patients overall, patients on ventilators, and then critical patients. So that's how it's broken down.
Okay. And these are, these are just COVID cases, right? So we're looking at it from the COVID angle versus the hospital capacity angle. Is that, is that right?
These are hospitalizations, yes, based on COVID. Correct.
Yeah. Okay. And then my, my other question was just about our staff capacity, but I think that's coming later in the evening. So I won't ask it now.
It is. And keep this in mind about staff capacity. It changes every 24 hours. You know, I keep bringing up the screener. And any given day, four people can fail a screener. And any given day, 70 people can, you know, fail a screener. So that kind of, the unknown makes it a little bit of a challenge. There was a house bill that was passed, I believe, yesterday or even today, which allows more flexibility within substitutes. I don't think that's necessarily going to help. It was, it was great that it was actually passed, but I don't believe it's going, nor do those local superintendents I chatted with today believe it's going to solve that problem. But we will talk about that in a minute. Sorry.
Okay. Howard?
Thank you, President Cullen. So, Pat, you, we approved as a board, I believe, a set of metrics back in August, correct? That was the Harvard model?
Correct.
Okay. And you've now shown us, you know, a number of different slides which have, you know, Brown University information and those, you know, color charts of the sliding scales. Are we, are you proposing that we're actually going to change the metric that we're using? Or are these just some ideas? I mean, I'm trying to understand, you know, where are we in our evolution here from where we were in August, metric-wise, not data, but the metrics? Are we, are you proposing us change the metrics and if, or not?
I'm proposing using the same leading indicators, but applying them differently. I'm proposing using the same leading indicators, but applying them differently. It's still adapted and based on the Harvard model. But it doesn't have those evergreen thresholds where if you get to this, everything simply shuts down, period.
Okay, so do we need to formally approve that? As a board?
That I, I am not sure, Trustee Baron.
Because we, we've got, what I'm trying to understand, we, we had a rule book that we had in August. And I even mentioned, uh, a meeting or two ago that that was in August and, you know, months have gone by and. You know, lots has been learned from in the country on this whole thing. If we're going to be evolving our metric from what we had before. Whether it's the metric that we're actually measuring or how we apply that metric. We probably should have that formalized in terms of, you know, coming to the, you know, board with this is the proposal. And then we approve it and then we will, you know, go out with the old and we will start with the new.
Well, it's not on the agenda tonight, um, Trustee Baron. It's not on the agenda tonight, Howard, to, to approve any metrics. So it's, so right now to answer your question, um, it's, 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 right now it's not on the agenda.
Okay, all right.
So.
So we're, so we're still using therefore, you know, the official organizational policy then is we're still using the August metrics. And the, and the, and the, what, what we approved, you know, in, in, in the, the, not only the metrics themselves, but the way we, we are applying the metrics. I mean, I, I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to, if we're going to kind of go with the flow. And delegate it to the superintendent, okay, then we should say that. But if that's something we need to approve as a board, then we should have it formally voted on as a board.
I don't understand why that needs to be voted on as the board. The superintendent has come to us and said. He's looking at it in certain ways and he's looking at it, uh, with several different indicators. And based on the indicators he's reviewing, he's going to come to us and say. Hey, I think we should open back up. I think we should close down. I think we should do this. And we should do that. There, there is no bright line test. I've said this a thousand times. Water boils at 100 degrees Celsius, but we don't have that kind of thing with the pandemic. There are no bright lines. And what he's telling us tonight, at least what I'm hearing. Is that there are lots of different indicators that we need to look at. And nobody, and this is the first time for everybody going through this worldwide. And he's looking at things, listening to things and making the best decisions and recommendations he can to the board. And as necessary, he'll come to us.
I, I totally understand, uh, Trustee Bank, that. What I'm saying is if we approved a model back in August. And then we applied that model with the data. Then if we're going to change the model in some way that we're, that the superintendent uses. Then we as a board should formally approve that model that, or change that model. That's all I'm saying.
President Cohen, can we also hear, can we also hear from Todd Bidlack really quick, please?
Yep, Todd? You muted, Todd. There you go.
Sorry, Pat, I think the technical answer to that would be, uh, in order to change the metrics, it would be a revision to the ECOOL. I don't think you need to have a vote outside of voting for the ECOOL. But if you brought an ECOOL with a revised metric, uh, established in that report. When the board approves the ECOOL, which is required under law right now to do that every 30 days, you would be approving the change in that. So I don't think you have to have a separate vote from that. Um, you could get a, a consensus that yes, we're going to change the ECOOL. Uh, we're going to revise the metric that sits within that report. And then the next time you approve the ECOOL, that vote would technically be doing what Howard is, is speaking about.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 what, I'm not trying to make this, you know, overly proceduralized and bureaucratic. I'm just saying if we're going to be changing the way we look at the data every, you know, every day or every week. Then we as a board should formally say, yep, that sounds like a great plan. Let's use that new model. That's all I'm saying. You know, whether it's part of the ECOOL or it's a separate vote that, you know, really isn't that important.
I think Todd answered, answered your question, Howard. So I think when we vote on the ECOOL and if we use the, we apply the metrics differently. I think we're getting to the same, the same point, right? Is that, is that kind of Superintendent Watson, is that the plan? And then Lisa, I'll go to you with your question.
Yes. So at the next board meeting, we'll include that as part of the ECL approval. And we'll have the slides back again in case there's additional questions. Uh, but yeah, the recommendation is going to be, because things have changed so much since August. The recommendation definitely is going to be to use the model. And this is actually based, um, the size of Harvard model, based on the CDC. Um, it's also based on what the state of Connecticut is doing as a state in whole that was vetted by their public health officials. And so that's their guidance for the whole state. Again, trying to make data-driven decisions allow what Governor Whitmer did in Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Where you target closures, uh, based on data. So it might mean perhaps it's open, but wing legs closed. It might be K through five is open, but six through 12 is closed. It might mean nine through 12 is open and everything else is closed. Instead of going with the one size fits all, which no one's really doing. Everyone is changed as far as what the best practice is for that.
If I could just make one final request, if you can take the, the, in Novus, those, the slides you presented this evening are not there yet. So if you could just make sure that we get the slides, that would be appreciated.
Absolutely. So Trustee Baron, what you'll see in Novus, instead of the slides on two pages, on one page. Uh, but we will make sure we share the final slide deck with everyone as well without a problem.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Howard. Lisa?
Okay, thank you. I, I was just going to say my understanding too is, um. That when we're presented with stuff in a study session. That, um, it, it's for us to have a discussion about. And when there is a required vote, it's. Or, you know, it's formulated in by way of a recommendation and they all appear at a meeting. So, um, you know, for purposes, purposes of discussion before, um. You know, we approved any amendments to the plan. Just had a couple of questions. Um, we heard last, um, meeting from Phil that the teachers were leery of, um, metrics and threshold changes. Can you, um, can you just let us know what? I know that they were at the table and I know that they were part of all of these discussions. Um, but just refresh me that they're okay and on board with the new thresholds?
So that's something I, I can ask Phil to address. COVID is very serious, right? I'm, I'm stating the obvious. And there's different concerns levels for different people. And then a lot of it is based on, you know, their own background, based on underlying health conditions. I think it'd be unfair for me to say, well, everyone feels safe about coming back at any grade band. That, that is certainly not, not true. And part of what we're going to talk about later is our mitigation strategies. You know, and just as hard as we're doing everything we possibly can to mitigate exposure. Look at our, our hybrid plant where it's half days, right? We pulled that out at the very last second. Um, and I got to talk to one epidemiologist and I shared this at the time. Who said every time you're not, you're not wearing a mask, you're blowing all these bubbles out. And they're bouncing all around the room and they can't escape. And the more bubbles, the higher your risk of getting infected. So if you can have school where the kids don't take off their mask. Which we're able to do, you know, K through eight by the half days. That substantially lowers the risk, right? They're not eating. So the most important thing we can do is make sure we mitigate as much as possible. Are the teachers ever going to feel safe coming back? Probably in my, if you're asking for my personal opinion, not, not having talked to every teacher in the district. Not until COVID's basically gone and infection rates incredibly low.
Yeah, I mean, given that, I, and I guess I, I, I appreciate that as well. I mean, the union is made up of many different teachers with many different opinions on this. But, um, I, I, I guess my concern is that they understand the rationale for why we're changing the threshold. Because of, you know, the, the amount of information we now know that we didn't know in August. So that they know it's not arbitrary or it's not done to achieve, you know, a predetermined outcome.
Correct. And that's why we made sure that when we were working on updating and looking at best practices, we looked at numerous models. And when I say numerous, I mean, well over 20 different models. That not only was Phil there, but the UNISERV director who represents the union was there as well. And one of the big things that came about, that we had a great discussion about full transparency. Was talking about, fine, the governor, you know, came out and said K through eight. But we all felt K through five should be grouped together and six through 12 should be grouped together. Because six through 12, they're switching classes, they're in different cohorts and things like that. And I know that was a big point of discussion. We all landed on the same page. Right? Six through 12, based on our model. And they're switching classes, makes more sense grouping that together compared to K five, or sorry, compared to K eight.
Okay, um, one, one more question. Somebody asked me. I didn't know the answer. Um, I, I know that we have prepared our set of metrics and our thresholds based on. A number of different sources. We didn't pull just the Harvard model, but we did Harvard with some modifications. Can you, um, remind me of who, who advised us on how to create our own model? Uh, who, who was at the table, you know, I mean, none of us are experts at this. I know, not that there's such a thing. But, uh, how, how did we come up with the Bloomfield model?
Wow, going back to August is, 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 it's.
No, I mean, just for the new threshold.
Oh, the main people in the room were myself, Todd Bidlack, um, Mary Hillberry, uh, Charlie Hollerith. Uh, Dr. Cuthar, who you've talked to before, gave us a business perspective and what they're doing in the business world. Um, everyone else were district employees. Uh, as far as who presented and brought the different models to the table. All the diff, all that research was done by all district employees. So every single potential model was researched by a district employee. Brought forward from those models, it was probably narrowed down to eight to 12 models, all by district employees. And then the final four models to look at, all by district employees. All the final decisions, all by district employees. And help, you know, we talked to, whether it's, you know, our international partners or, you know, I was. Texting with George Heist just yesterday about this very, very same thing and kind of what was going on because he had his meeting yesterday morning. And sharing ideas. So there's a lot of that collaboration locally. And also, you know, throughout different, you know, colleagues we talked to throughout the United States. And I know sometimes my schedule is tight and I can't meet with some of those colleagues. And then I know it's been very nice that, uh, Sarah Fairman stepped in for me during those meetings and, and, and make sure that Bloomfield Hills is represented. And, and we hear from Virginia, from Tennessee and Mississippi and Louisiana and Ohio. What they're doing when it comes to protocols and COVID and instruction. And, and brings that back for us as well. And actually Susan Golab was on that last meeting when I couldn't attend as well. So we'll continue to search and seek out the, the best of what's out there. And I know this is maybe people see it as we're, we're switching. Uh, again, it's the same two key indicators. The threshold levels are exactly the same. We're just changing how we apply it. Based on the most up-to-date information that we have. And if you ask me, is it going to change again before the end of the school year? I have no idea. It could. If, if data suggests it should, then I'm going to bring it forward. That's what you, you expected me to do. That's what you hired me to do. So I'll do that as well. But I am going to recommend this change. It is supported by data. Um, again, if, if people want to go in and see how supplied at the state level, they can look at the state of Connecticut. And see how the state of Connecticut is doing. And it was vetted by all their health officials. And again, it's still based on the Harvard model. It's still based on the most recent CDC guidelines. Except. What should be coming out any day now, when it comes to quarantine. CDC looks like they're going to update their guidelines. So you'll need to quarantine for 10 days instead of 14. But if you get the positive, if you take the test and you're not positive, it'll be a seven-day quarantine. That will also help with our staffing issue. Now that's not official yet. The CDC hasn't said, yes, that's what they're doing. But it looks like the data is trending that way that they're going to make the decision. And that will be something I can share as well.
All right, Pat, I just wanted to say, um. You know, as a parent of two kids currently in the district, uh, thank, thank you for that work. And I was mostly curious because, you know, uh, word on the street is that Bloomfield is the district to watch. Because, you know, we, we got the formula and made the prediction well, um, so far. And so I know other places are looking and I just was curious, you know, I, I know that you're reading. From a million different sources, um, and, and, you know, it's nice to hear that it was an internal team that did it. I'm proud of, um, you know, sort of being ahead of. Using, having reliable sources and being able to predict based on our metrics and our thresholds. Um, what's coming and averting some of the really bad spikes. So, uh, thank you. I mean, I, I, um. My question was just basically out of curiosity. If everyone's looking, I'm sort of wondering like who's. Creating the system that seems to be working really well. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm blessed with a very, very good team. That's willing to do the research and think outside the box, which has really been helpful. Because COVID is all thinking outside the box.
Howard?
So. Let me make sure I understand what we're, what we've got here. The, what we have used in the past and what we're planning on using is for, for the, uh, infection rate and the, um, um, the number of cases. That is the, those are community numbers, right?
You are correct, Trustee Baron.
Okay. So we've been hearing so much in the press and the graphs that you showed. Indicated also, uh, with the little arrows going up and, you know, and down or sideways. Um, that the distribution of, um, illness is not uniform. And that, uh, younger children are not as readily impacted as older children or even adults and, and older, uh, folks. So, but we're using as our metrics. An average of the general population. And, and I know a lot of our parents are very concerned and have sent emails in saying, you know. Younger children aren't impacted. We even hear it from, um, um, some of, uh, Dr. Fauci even. You know, school, you know, younger kids are not, um, getting the infection as readily as older people. Are there models that are now starting to differentiate between, instead of using the general population? Should we be having a unique, uh, only, you know, or isolating either 100% or partially only on? The kids as opposed to, uh, just an average, you know. You know, general population age of, you know, 45 or 50, let's say, as opposed to the average age of the population. Our buildings are probably, you know, 13 or 14. Granted, you've got adults mixed in there too. But, um, uh, our age distribution is different in the buildings than it is in the general population. Can you speak to that, please?
Question. I'll answer it best I can based on talking to epidemiologists and infectious disease specialists. No, it should not be broken down. They believe that the number for the, the number of children who have COVID-19 is higher than what is actually being reported. They feel that many are probably, again, tricky word, probably, what does that really mean? Are asymptomatic and many have mild symptoms and don't get tested. Also, remember it's part of a community effort. So they may not get it as much. But they're also caring or they're, the adults that care for them. They're coming to contact with in and out of school. The biggest thing that they tell me over and over. Mitigation, mitigation, mitigation. Students need to wash their hands. Students need to wear a mask. Keep them six feet apart when the numbers are this high. Are you doing those things? My answer is yes.
Any other questions, Howard?
I, I'm sorry, was Pat done? He was breaking up. I don't know if he's finished or not.
K through five a lot.
Pat, Pat, you're breaking up terribly.
I don't know if someone wants to step in, um, Leonard or Todd? Till we get Pat back?
Can you hear me, President Cohen?
Now you're back in.
Now you're back. Todd's about to jump in.
All right. So, Trustee Baron, what I was saying, and I don't know if you're the part of the recommendations from the infectious disease specialists and epidemiologists, is that you don't look at that. It's a factor, it's part of the multifactorial approach. But many students of that age band, they believe, could be asymptomatic or have just mild reaction to COVID. Again, COVID is serious. Mitigate, mitigate, mitigate. They continue to ask me three questions when I talk to them. Are they going to be six feet apart? You know, with the numbers being this high. Are they going to wear a mask? Yes, when you look at K through five model, don't need to take off their mask while in the building at all.
Pat, you're going in and out.
Huge, huge.
I think it's, I mean, I don't know, again, Todd or Leonard wants to step in till we can get Pat. I think he was talking about Howard mitigation.
I, I, I mean, I, I, I sort of get the, I mean, I, I understand what he's saying in the sense that, yes, there are differences in the age, but they can be carriers, so therefore we shouldn't be changing the model. One additional question I have is, nothing we say in our, any of our models, whether the old model or the new model, differentiates on special education. Should we be having that as a, another factor in this? Should special education students be treated differently than the gen ed population?
So, Trustee Baron, keep in mind, when you say special ed, as far as bringing students back, you're talking about bringing all students back. Because they may be in a special ed class or a resource room for one class and then general ed for the rest of their classes. What we'll refer to is our phase and priorities. Our phase and priorities are K through five, ARP, FRP, our self-contained programs, Blumen preschool, prep program, Bowers. Why prep and Bowers even though they're older? They're isolated from everyone else. They're not mixing those cohorts. Again, this is why we're not changing metrics. Just applying them.
Okay, I, I'm hearing that. So, and again, you're, you're coming in and out, Pat. So we have a phase in plan by these different cohorts, as you're saying. But our phase out plan seems to be pretty much on or off. Is that right? We have an incremental phase in plan over weeks as, as, you know, group by group by group. But phase out, it's, you know, we, we, we do that as a switch, it appears.
What you're saying, Trustee Baron, is correct.
Okay.
And that's why we're looking to apply the metrics differently, because they do need to do that. What best practice is locally, nationally or internationally is any longer, hence the request for the change.
Because what the governor did is she phased out high school, but left preschool, preschool through eight at the discretion of the district. So she had a phase out plan that was incremental, as opposed to an all or nothing in what she did about a month ago. Is that something we should be thinking about in terms of having a phase out plan like we have a phase in plan?
So, Trustee Baron, this will give us a phase out plan. We know there.
Pat, you're going in and out. I don't know, Todd.
Paul?
Yeah.
Paul, I think you can probably hear me okay. What I would, what I would recommend is maybe taking like a four or five-minute break. And we'll see if Pat maybe could use his cell for his audio and that might help with the tech issues. So if you just take a, a quick break, give him a few minutes, because I believe he'll have to log out of the meeting and then back in order to connect with his phone.
Can you hear me? I just switched Wi-Fi's again, I switched to a different Wi-Fi.
Okay. That's, that's a little bit, yeah, that's clearer, Pat. If that helps, I'm, I'm happy to go on a three to, you know, four-minute break. So Pat can get connected or just dial in. Pat, you want to see?
My apologies.
That's, that's fine.
My apologies.
I do have a, a comment. I know, one thing I know we've seen that went to the board, I know our, you know, you were talking about mitigation strategies. I think our district got 100%. Pat, I don't know if you want to talk about that a little bit? It just came back from all.
That will be part of the update in just a minute, if that's okay, President Coleman.
Yep.
So, Trustee Baron, I did want to address your question. As far as Governor Whitmer and having a phased-out approach, this gives us a phased-out approach. But we're not going to have it where we say, this is what it is for each individual case. We're going to work with Oakland County Health Division and make that decisions with them. So if we have a building where there's been transmission in the building, they may ask us to close the class or they might ask us to close the building. A great example of that is when we had to close a couple of classes at the Blumen preschool site based on what took place and information with Oakland County Health Division. So our one-size-fits-all, where we phase in and it's great, but our phased-out plan is everything shuts and we have to be 21 days. That is no longer best practice. You're not going to see that. Another great place to go, State of Arizona, State of Oregon, and to look at what they're doing as far as their metrics and things like that. You'll see that they're not having those evergreen thresholds either. That is a shift that everyone's made again, locally, nationally, internationally. And that's what we're looking to do here as well.
Very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Trustee Baron.
Lisa, you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear on the, the phase out terminology, because I don't want to be misleading. You know, the governor didn't really have a phase out. It, it was because science was showing there wasn't spread to the same extent in K through eight. It wasn't based on, our, our phases are based on priority of returning students who need in-person learning the most. So the ideology is completely different. One is necessitated, or, or should I say, informed by existing data and what we know about the spread or what we think we know at this point. And the other is prioritizing back in based on other factors, which Pat and administration have defined for us back in August. So ju- just so that we're clear that we're not, and those have always been the phase, there's always been phases and priorities. Those aren't changing at all. Am I right about that?
You are correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Oh, Pat?
Yeah, I, I think it's important that we, we have clarity around this, right? So I think everyone agrees we want students back in school. We also want to make the safest possible environment for everyone. We also want to base it on science and we want to base it on data. And the data and science is showing us right now, again, nationally, internationally, locally, that it's not a one-size-fits-all. We need to make decisions based on buildings, based on cohorts and look at all these different things as we move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. With that, you want to go to return to school update?
Yes, please. So looking at a return to school update, next slide, please, David. A lot of teachers have reached out to me about PPE and just where we're at. So I want to make sure not only is our wonderful teaching staff updated, but our community as well. Right now, all the schools are stocked with all the necessary PPE in addition to the warehouse inventory. In the warehouse, we have plenty of cleaning supplies. We have masks, whether it's the N95, the KN95 polable or the hard shell. We have the Badger face shields. We have sanitizer. We have gloves. We have disposal gowns, air purifiers for the rooms that are work areas that will have air exchange. And we have thermometers to take temperatures if necessary. So I think it's important for everyone to know when it comes to PPE, again, to Tina and Brian Goby and their team, making sure that we got all these supplies early. For example, Clorox wipes. You know, we still have 216 containers available and they haven't been available forever because they did such a good job of ordering everything. So we are fully supplied when we do return to school for PPE. Another thing that, next slide, please, David. Another thing that was offered through the Oakland County Health Division was an evaluation of your mitigation measures and category. And this is something I spoke about last time at our board meeting. And I'm happy to report, like you said, President Coleman, we earned 100%. When we're talking about health and safety, it's our number one priority. And so we made sure that we not only filled it out, but we accurately, you know, described everything we were doing. And to get 100% definitely was our goal. And so I'm beyond excited that we are doing everything we can to be as safe as possible. Next slide, please. Again, looking at it through health and safety, you know, why we've been remote. So Leonard Sanford and our wonderful school nurses completed COVID-19 compliance walkthrough at all 12 school sites earlier this week. Even though we're not currently in person, we know at some point we will be back. We need to make sure we still are doing all the things we need to do. So the goal of the walkthroughs was to provide refreshers, answer questions and provide relevant updates and ensure that all previously set in place COVID-19 transmission mitigation measures are still in compliance. 100%, they still are. The building administrators, their diligence, their ingenuity is second to none. So again, it was important to have that refresher to make sure, does everyone still remember everything we're doing? Is there anything new that we need to bring up? We have to have quarantine rooms. Do we still have all the supplies in the quarantine room? Are they still set up the way they were before? Is everything ready to operate? Does everyone know what they're supposed to do? And it was a resounding yes across the board. Next slide, please. So staffing update. Again, this is something we talked about before. We know that support staff were down about nine compared to where we were last year. Preschool and latchkey were down 21 and drivers were down eight. As far as teachers and staff that have been on leave, 142 have recovered and returned. We have 22 as of right now that are still active on Epsilon. We have five that we know that are currently quarantined, six that are active out on FMLA. Plus, unfortunately, being in remote right or distance right now, the unknown of those who maybe haven't told us that they are because they're in a remote status. We continue with our recruitment efforts. Our fill rate when we were in person, typically it's about 89% or it was last year. When we were in person, it was 75% at this time. Next slide, please. Substitute teachers. So pulling data, you can see that the number of new substitute teachers, parents and instructional assistants between June to December 2019 was 71. June to December of this year is 39. So again, when it's time for us to return to in-person, we will still need some subs. We've increased the daily rate from $105 to $130. But it's really not about the money. It's about the opportunity to spend time with awesome students. So I know for some, some people, it's required for them to do X amount of community service and things like that through their job. If your job requires that, feel free to sign up to be a sub. And I know if it's required as community service through your job, you're not supposed to accept money. Maybe we can work it out with your employer where we do have to pay you, but you can donate money back to the school, to the, to the foundation, which would be great. So that could be a win-win there. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Pat. So if anyone has questions, put in the chat or raise your hand. One question I have, Pat, going back to the last slide is, so I, obviously we're down, you know, I saw in terms of staffing, parries, bus drivers. Do we, I'm just from a staffing and I know obviously substitutes, you're going to need spur of the moment if people, you know, obviously get sick. So we're, we're short there. From a staffing perspective right now, because I know, you know, the high school we closed because of staffing and we were on the verge, I think of elementary school. How are we staffing, you know, as of now, if, if we needed to open the buildings?
Can't quite answer that now. It would be difficult to kind of figure out the last second. What we don't want to do is roll everyone back in and then have to shut it down right away. And we want to learn from what happened to some of our neighboring districts that, you know, unfortunately waited until November to try to come back and that's happened. And especially being this close to winter break and right after Thanksgiving. So on my next slide, I'll talk about the next steps that I'm proposing for us to move forward. Because the goal is not only to come back for a short period of time. The goal is to come back and stay in for the rest of the year, except for maybe classrooms we have to close or individual buildings we have to close, based on working with Oakland County Health Division where it's been determined that either A, we can't staff a particular building or B, there's been transmission either in the building through multiple classes or in a particular class, and we're required to shut it down at that point.
Okay. And then my second question is, with that, you know, Oakland County Health score of 100%, is that to interpret that, you know, what we've done for a mitigation factor, you know, across our district, that, you know, potentially the transmission of students is low because we've done everything from a mitigation factor? Is, is that attributed to that, that score of 100%?
Yes, that we've done as, as much as we can when it comes to mitigation factors for having students in the building for in-person learning. And going back to the dashboard, that's part of Brown University and the superintendent of school administrators. That accounts for, there's another slide I didn't put in, which shows all the different mitigation factors that are actually recommended. And we do the top five. Then also looking at the CDC model, they recommend five different things for mitigation that they feel are important. We do all five of those. We look at the governor's return to school plan and all the highly recommended things that are in there. And based on the hybrid model we left that we would return to, we meet and do all the highly, highly qualified or not highly qualified, but highly recommended items as well when it comes to mitigation.
All right. And, and that's, I just want to thank you, you know, you, your central office administrator, you know, everyone around the district to get that score of 100% doing everything possible to keep our kids as safe as possible, you know, while they're in in-person learning. So I appreciate that. Thanks a lot, Pat. Cynthia?
Thank you, Paul. Pat, I guess my question to you is, once the board would approve the adjustment in our metrics to this new model, which is a more flexible model that allows us to be more specific in how we address the problems within our district. What do you see is the board's role in terms of you, are you looking for the board to be able to meet and approve each time? One building or how, how do you see the board's role in, as we would move forward in this new model?
What I would see the board's role, I wouldn't be seeking to bring it for approval each time. I would be updating the board by saying, I talked to Oakland County Health Division at this building. They are kind of like we did with Blumen. They recommended we shut down the classroom, we notified the board and then we notify with the parents.
Makes sense to me.
Any other questions? Howard?
Pat, you're, one of your prior.
Pat?
I apologize. Can I, can I make a clarifying statement really quick?
Sure.
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Baron, President Coleman. So, Trustee, when I say shut down, let me rephrase that. What I'm really referring to is we would go to distance learning, right? Learning wouldn't stop, wouldn't take place. So if we decide this elementary school has a class that needs to go to distance learning, notify the board, we notify the class, we notify the community. We were very transparent with our COVID cases. Not only did we put them on the website, that's required by law, but we emailed every day. So everyone knew, there was no hiding anything beyond transparent. We're one of the few districts in Oakland County that was doing that type of transparency. So it would be this class or maybe this building is going to distance learning. It might be seven days based on the new quarantine factors, it might be 14. But we would work with the Oakland County Health Division on that. And again, update the board, update that community and then send it out so the whole community would know. When we close, you know, we had to close Blumen, we sent it out. If we had to close Lone Pine. If we had to close Lone Pine, for example, that'd be shared with the full community as well.
Thank you, Pat.
Howard?
What, sorry, go ahead.
No, Pat, go ahead.
No, Pat.
Just another point of clarification. The board, you just need to approve the monthly ECOL. That's it. And then we would kind of move from there. Again, based on science, based on data work on, based on working with Oakland County Health Division.
Howard, you have a question?
Yeah. Um, if memory serves, um, over the summer, Oakland County Commissioners, um, approved nurses for all the Oakland County School Districts. And we got two nurses. And it's, if, if I'm remembering right, the funding for that extended through December 31st of 2020. Am I correct?
Trustee Baron, you are 100% correct. We are in negotiations with the Oakland County Health Division right now to retain one of the nurses for the remainder of the school year. Again, health and safety is our number one priority. Uh, we have Leonard through the rest of the school year as our health and wellness director. We also want to retain the nurse just to have an extra set of hands. It will be money well spent. She's done a phenomenal job. She also happens to be a community member, so she's well invested in, you know, the safety of everything in her community as well. And so that's something we've already been working on to make sure we have enough hands to handle anything that could come up.
So when we are in 100% virtual, and again, we haven't handled the payroll of these nurses. But I mean, do they have, because we don't have anyone in the buildings, are they basically off duty because there's no one in the buildings right now?
No, parents are still reaching out to them, building administrators are still reaching out to them because they're getting questions from parents. Although there's that hotline to call in the morning. My understanding from the Oakland County Health Division is that even when we were in person and some districts are still in person, that hotline's not being really used. So a lot of those questions fall upon Leonard and upon the nurses. Again, our, our goal is to return. And so we want to make sure we retain the one nurse who's been with us the full, you know, the full time since the beginning of the year. So we can kind of keep what we have going forward to make sure we're doing what's best interest and the safest interest of our students and of our staff that are in the buildings every day when we do return.
I understand. So we're, so we as a district have thought through and said, we don't need two. We just need one for the, you know, going into the 2021 calendar year. Um, do you, do you know of anything that's happening at the county level in terms of extending that deadline past or the funding from the county past December 31st into the 2021 calendar year? Or is it on the, each one of the districts to do it themselves?
As of right now, it's on each district. I haven't heard anything different. Also, let me say this. When we return to in person, if we feel that it's too much for Deb and Leonard to keep up with and we need another nurse again, then we'll retain another nurse. If we need two more nurses during COVID, then we're going to get two more. We, I'm gonna keep saying this, COVID is serious, right? And you, we can talk about different age groups and how it impacts. No one wants to be the data outlier. No one wants to be that person. So we need to be as safe as possible. If that means we need to do a few more things there because of what's going on with COVID, it's ours heavy more than just Deb and Leonard, then we'll do that as well.
So there, there's what's happening with the district and I totally agree, whatever you think is the right, you know, manning for nurses is, is your call. The only thing I'm, I'm thinking right now is, has anyone reached out to, uh, uh, the county executive or our county commissioners to see whether the county commission is considering extending their funding into the 21 calendar year? Because that was, that was all done back in July and August when those decisions were made. And we're now, you know, four weeks before the end of the year. Uh, Ms. Vanoyen has something, maybe she knows something?
Yeah, that was CARES Act funding that expires at the end of December, which is why that has the end date as it does. One could hope that, that Washington could extend that.
Okay, so this was not Oakland, this is not Oakland County's largesse. This is coming out of the federal government funding Oakland County, so everything is still bollocked up in, in DC. Okay, thank you very much, Cynthia. That's appreciated.
Jennifer?
Similarly, I was just curious as to how much money has our district received? Trickle down from, from CARES. I know, I know the CARES money was given to the county to distribute. Um, what, what did, what did we get?
I don't have that information off the top of my head. I believe it's something we're covering in the FFLA, um, our committee's Merrill. But either way, we can get you that information. I just don't have it at the top of my head right now.
Okay.
COVID details, if you want more COVID questions.
Trustee Cook, I just looked at the FFLA agenda and, uh, Ms. Kostick put together a whole schedule that I downloaded, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. So I can look at it and send you a copy if you'd like.
Thank you.
All right. Um, unless if we don't have any other questions, we can go to Dee, next steps.
Thank you, President Colin. So I'm requesting, uh, a special board meeting on January 7th, 2021. During this special meeting, a couple of things. One, I want to provide an update on staffing. And two, I want to establish the phase and dates. And it'd be the same priorities that we had earlier, except I would be putting two groups together. I'd be putting K through five, early on seed, ARP, FRP, DHH, prep, Wing Lake and Blumen all together. And the idea is we would need a shorter phase in time than we did before. Remember back to early September when we started facing our students and I believe it was September 14th or 21st? We kind of staggered it over and over and over. We need to make sure that transportation was working. We need to make sure the students knew the protocols, that the teachers were able to teach the students the protocols and that everything was going to work. We know it works. We know it works well. And so we would, my, my proposal will be depending on the data, to have that as one group that comes in together and not facing it over weeks and weeks period, but one group together. The reason for the seventh, a couple of things. One, now being so close to winter break and knowing that Thanksgiving just happened, it's not going to make sense to try to uproot everyone right now 12 days before we go on winter break. Coming back on the seventh allows all the data for Thanksgiving to play out. And it allows information from winter break to play out. And so we're operating with as much information as possible. We are then making a decision based on all the information we have in real time on that day. Instead of saying, six weeks from now, we're gonna come back that day and nobody has a clue. We will be ready to move, we'll be ready to move fast at that point. So again, I'm asking for the help of the board to please grant a special meeting on January 7th so that we can look at our staffing, establish phase and dates and kind of go from there. Those are our next steps.
Can I ask a question or?
I think, I think we're done, right, Pat? So do you want to take that? Jennifer?
Yeah, I just wanted to put it out there. Do, do you think we should move that up a little bit? Like, um, I think the school resumes, uh, let's see, January 4th is it? So would it be, would it be good for us to just get right on it and, and meet literally as soon as everybody's back? Um, would, would we have enough information at, at that time?
One of my concerns is, let me back up. One thing I think we did really well as a district is we did it right the first time. We, we really made good decisions and we faced people inappropriately. Those first two days, we need to gather information. We need to see exactly where we're at. We need to see where we're going to be at staffing. How many people took additional leave during winter break? How many are currently quarantined right now? The sooner the better would be great. But at the same time, I don't want that yo-yo in effect. We've seen it happen at so many other districts where we're in, now we're out for a month and you only have four days in person. Wednesday doesn't work because there's some other board members that are going on or board members that are involved in different things. So Thursday is the earliest day. But we don't need a long time after that to pick dates. We know exactly what we're going to do. If you look at our building administrators and you look at our teaching staff, they executed like, like they were trained for years in doing this thing. It was unbelievable going to the buildings and everyone knew what they were doing and everything hit just right.
Yep. That makes sense. I just, we are, we are here at your disposal. Um, if you need us for, for any part of this.
Cynthia, thanks. Jennifer, you have any other questions?
I just think it also gives you a few more days post, uh, Christmas Day and New Year's Day to see what the effect of that may be too.
Correct.
Thanks. Cynthia, Howard?
Yeah, we just, um, uh, from the board side, we have some logistics issues because, um, we have three incumbent board members who are going to be leaving us, uh, sadly. And we have three new board members coming in. So, uh, and we have, uh, you know, swearing in ceremonies and things like that. So, uh, we're just gonna have to work out the logistics as to how that all works out. Because we, we typically would not have a meeting that early in the month of January with the new board members coming on board.
For the new, you don't use the word typically when you're talking about COVID.
Okay, good point.
And I, I also want to say, uh, in case this is misunderstood, there is no way we would postpone getting kids back in school so we could have ceremonies. That's, please do not leave people with that impression.
I was not, I was not indicating that whatsoever. What I was just saying is we're gonna have, I believe, you know, uh, 40% turnover in that meeting in that first week. Am I right?
But they can join officially, um, sooner than that. So they don't have to be sworn in, take the oath of office at the board meeting. They can be sworn in, in, in the office ahead of time if, to be able to make important.
You are, you are quite correct. They're really, quite frankly, they're sworn in, you know, earlier and then there's a ceremonial swear-in. So we're, we're just gonna have to work that out, that's all.
Yeah, I think, yeah, no, I appreciate, and, and Pat, you know, you explained, you know, the, the date, why the date, why it makes sense. Uh, you know, all as a board, you know, just, you know, look at our calendars and like Jennifer said, you know, at the discretion of when you want to meet, you know, we'll work that out. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thanks, Pat. Social, emotional learning?
I'll turn it over to Margaret Schultz.
Hi. Thanks, David. You can go to the next one. I hope everyone is well tonight. Um, I'm just gonna give a quick update on what's been going on with SEL this year. Um, I know I, I gave a quick update earlier in the year. So we are coming into this year with a brand new plan, which is really exciting. And we, there are three main parts to the plan. The first is that we have our kids, our, our staff going through daily check-in, different routines to make sure we're checking in with our kids and making sure, um, that we're kind of establishing those relationships and community with kids so that they feel comfortable sharing. Also, um, that our meetings that we have with our adults are based in wellness. And so we're like similarly with how we're working with kids with check-in routines. We're doing those also with staff in meetings. And then the big thing that I want to focus on today, and this is still gonna be quick, um, is the whole school weekly SEL. So all of our students, K-12 are engaging and actually also our prep students are engaging in at least 30 minutes every week, SEL. So David, if you want to go to the next slide. Um, and so we're calling it transformative SEL, which is a term that comes out of National Equity Project along with CASL, the collaborative for academic, social, emotional learning. And this meal is from CASL. And it covers, it talks about like the five core competencies that, that they really see as the, the main tenets of social emotional learning. So self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills and social awareness. And so all of the work that we're doing in this 30 minutes every week is built around these core competencies. We can go to the next slide. So we also then within that have developed a monthly theme. And so Pat, uh, last month at the board meeting, talked about the theme of gratitude and, and shared some gratitude. And this month, December, is reflection. And so, um, we are also like from all of our meetings, from our district administrator meetings to our individual building get meetings, uh, we're looking at that theme. So we're making sure that we really see social emotional learning and equity as one in the same. They cannot be separated. That is important that social emotional learning is seen as a lever for equity. And so we're, we're, we're working really hard to make sure that those are tied in together. Um, and so within each, these themes are more accessible to students, more accessible to families. We all know what gratitude means. So we wanted to keep the themes and things that families and students will really understand and be able to grab onto. But within those, we're making sure that every single, we're kind of calling them lessons, every single lesson is tied to, um, the CASL core competencies. So you can go to the next slide. All right. So this is what, uh, this is hard to look at. It really doesn't matter, uh, the details of what you see in here. But this is what a teacher, uh, gets every month to, so that they have access to. So we have a, a leadership team that we put together. And myself and some other members of Learning Services have been working really closely with this team to help build curriculum. So we had talked about, and I know, um, it's been brought up to me from a lot of different places about purchasing, um, a canned curriculum. And it was really something that we didn't feel met our needs because many of the, the curriculums that are put together by, you know, there's, there's something called second steps. There's a lot of different ones. They aren't really anti-racist and equitable in the way that we would want them to be. And so we are pulling from a lot of different resources, but we are building our own curriculum. So we have a curriculum writing team and the teachers would, can every month go in and they have a, they have a template for every week. So it's not necessarily a lesson plan. It's a template where they have choice within the template. They can pick and choose, um, activities that they may want to use, different questions. So, uh, and then there's also, we try to throw a ton of additional resources in if they don't feel like, if a teacher doesn't feel like that lesson makes sense for them that week, that they have different, um, resources that they could also choose from. Our staff, you know, some of them are, have been living SEL for years and this is, this is just what they do and it's easy and some are really just starting to dip their toes in and need that additional support. So we're trying to make sure that it's differentiated for, for our staff as well based on their level of comfort. You can go to the next slide. So this, I just wanted to show you what a sample template would look like. So when you click on within, um, that set of curated resources, this would be what one template would look like. And I picked one that I wrote, so I wasn't throwing anyone else's work out there. And we try to make sure that they can work synchronously, asynchronously, or that they can work face-to-face or remote so that we have, we have options within each one. And again, you kind of see, uh, this, this one was, um, in October on shame versus guilt, which was only, only at the high school level. But only because it's, I really love Brene Brown and this is something she talks about a lot. But, um, there's, there's multiple different videos that staff can choose from. So again, it was really important that staff have choice so that they can own this. SEL has to be, it's really, it's, it's hard work, right? It's, it's about what's inside. And so, um, we didn't want to give step-by-step because it, that doesn't give the same level of ownership. So we're really, we think it's working well. We're really excited, um, about the progress that we've made so far. I think I have one more slide. Oh, and then I just wanted to, so that, that's basically the, um, what we've been doing with, with our SEL this year. I also wanted to just point out, um, for the sake of all families and caregivers that I've been working with PTIA and PTOC this year to try to make sure that we're also offering work aligned with social emotional learning, aligned with our goals for our, for our parents and for caregivers within our community. And so we have already had two different webinars. We had a cultivating mental health in the era of COVID-19, which was in September. And then we had conversations with children about race in November. And then we have three more coming up, January, February and March. Bill Boyle is going to be doing, um, a webinar on restorative practices specifically for, um, parents and caregivers. And we're doing one in the evening and one in the morning to hopefully try to accommodate schedules for as many people that want to, that can attend. So look, in the next couple of weeks, we will have some, um, flyers coming out with registration. And then, um, in March, Bill will also be coming and facilitating a mindfulness for caregivers and parents. And so we're also really excited about that. It was something that when talking with PTIA and PTOC that parents were really looking for. And so we're, again, um, and PTOC that parents were really looking for. And so we're, again, if you, if you go back and look at that CASL wheel, you don't need to pull it back up, David, but there's a lot about making sure that like community and family is involved. So we're trying to make sure that we're, we're attending to everyone within our community, not just students, not just staff, but also, also our families as much as we can. And I think, I think that's it.
Thanks, Margaret. I know.
Some questions.
I did, not really a question, more like a comment. For people like me who don't really understand all the, the different curriculum and lesson plans and, and as you speak, I happened to catch part of this by accident with one of my kids. In, in practice, this is what it looked like to me. I had my doubts about how PE translated online because it, it doesn't seem like it would. So just out of curiosity, kind of listening in the background, it was so well done. I sent an email, you know, as from, as a parent. It was checking in with students. It was an icebreaker with some kind of survey about a football game, I think. And it was funny because it was the teacher's alma mater. It was taking suggestions from students as to which kind of meditation and yoga videos to share with the entire group. It was students that were really engaged in talking. It was an article specifically chosen that they had time to read and then come back and discuss. And it was a robust discussion. It, it was, it made me feel like if we can do this with a PE class, that, you know, it just, it, to me, it made me think anything was possible. I, I was very impressed. I also wanted to, to know, I attended one of the parent, through the PTIA, one of the parent lectures, webinar lectures.
I'm calling them webinars, yeah.
Webinars. Can we put those on the website somewhere so parents could find it easily if they wanted to participate in any of these? I don't remember how I found out about it, but maybe that, like a place that they could go look if they're, if they're feeling like, you know, I need.
Yeah. I have the, we have a recording of the very first one we did in September, and, and I thought that was on the website, but maybe not. I'll double check. Or if it is, maybe it's, it's in a place that's not as, as easily found. So I will double check on that. For Jay, we recorded the parts that he was speaking. We haven't put it out yet because it's kind of, it's kind of weird and it feels a little disjointed, but he felt really strongly, and I agree with not wanting to record the parents when they were being vulnerable and, and making sure that we're kind of giving them that, that privacy and safe space as much as possible. So I, I wasn't comfortable recording anyone but Jay to put on. And I think Bill's probably going to be the same way. So I'll have to, I want to think a little bit outside the box on that because I want that information to be accessible to families, but I don't want to in any way compromise a family's privacy in the process of doing that. So I need to think probably, there are ways to do it. I can definitely put all of the resources that Jay gave me on the website that's, and that's like the videos we watched and things like that. So yeah, I'll, I'll make sure.
It was nice for parents to have a place also to be interactive. Because sometimes you just need other people that, you know, to commiserate with sometimes if you've had one of those days and whatever. So, you know, maybe to, for those that want to attend live so they have an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, well, and we, that's, that's the thing with, with all of the webinars, not as much the very first one, but with all of these with Bill, like there's going to be breakout rooms. There's going to be time for people to talk. That's how he facilitates. That's how Jay facilitates. And so, yeah, it's, they're definitely meant to be interactive, and they should be a place for, for families to be able to talk, talk and share and have that kind of, yeah, relief, I guess. But yeah, just camaraderie and knowing that we're all kind of in the same, in the same boat. Because I know even for me as a parent, like it was nice for me as a parent of four-year-old twins to be able to have that space with other parents to talk as well.
One more, one more question clarification, I guess. If, if a teacher recognizes that a particular student is struggling with issues, outside of what curriculum, I mean, they are, is the protocol still for them to reach out one-on-one to students if they suspect that there's something going on or some, not academic struggles, but maybe social emotional struggling?
Yes. So we have a full protocol for that. And we have, it's kind of tiered depending on what the teachers are hearing. So the social workers and myself and Jen, along with counselors and psychologists, worked on that over the summer, and all of the staff has that. And yeah, just depending on what a student says, like it might just be a conversation with the student, it might be a call home, or it might be an immediate, like go to the administrator and go to the social worker. So yes, we have all of that laid out for staff.
Thank you. Anything else, Cynthia?
So Margaret, I got to say thank you. I love, I own away by your excitement and your energy and creativity. The curriculum that you're writing, I think it's spectacular how you've come at this position out of thin air and wonderful for kids. I, I am curious, as we have this sort of national worry about, about teachers and about kids, as the pandemic is wearing on, when you are, when there are the regular check-ins, both with, with students and with staff members, have you seen concern rising over the, over more recent weeks? Obviously, we did break, so it's kind of hard to tell. But yeah, I think anecdotally, a lot of people are feeling like this has gone on and on and on and on. Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering if the worries about social emotional wellness for, for kids and adults is beginning to show that in your check-ins.
That's a really good question. First of all, thank you for what you said first. I really appreciate that. And then, second of all, I do think we're all worried about that, right? I, you know, I, I'm not a part, obviously, of every check-in, and I hear a little bit, you know, and I meet with students every week, just my, my little group of 10 to 15 kids, my Student Equity Council. But even just in that group, I have noticed that the last couple of weeks, it does seem like emotions are really high. I spend more time like staying after just chatting with kids about what's going on, what do you need? So I, I think this time of year is like that without COVID. And so with the addition of COVID, it is, I think it is a worry. And I do see, I think I see more tears. And that, that all obviously concerns me. I know it concerns everybody, you know, from, whatever, all of us. It concerns all of us that work here, all of you. So I, I do, it does seem like things are, and people are worried right now because more people are sick, right? Because that, because that's just what's happening. So more people are starting to know people that are sick, and I'm hearing more of that. And I think that, that kind of is increasing anxiety as well. So we do kind of informally notice that, but I don't, I definitely don't have any sort of hard data evidence to support that anecdotal noticing.
Do, do you collect any kind of terms of the number of kids as you do check-ins that make concerns?
So, yeah, I don't do that, but within, yes, within each individual building, they would be doing that mostly for kids that are, not just like if a teacher checked in one-on-one with a kid because they might have heard something, but if students were then, if we talked to social workers or counselors about it, then yes, that's being, not necessarily numbers-wise, but that's definitely being tracked and kids are being checked back in with and families are being checked, checked back in with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Margaret. I don't see any other questions or comments. With that, Dave, we'll go to public comment.
Yeah, got a few. I'll bring it up. You seeing that okay?
Yeah, I've seen it, you know. All right, I'll start. As you know, Dr. Robert Radfield, CDC Director urges districts around the country to remain open for in-person learning. Dr. Anthony Fauci also insists that schools should remain open. New York Public Schools have reversed course based on the latest data and now are open for face-to-face learning. Now, the whole world has months of data that proves K-38 schools are not a source of community spread. Given the latest findings or recommendations from the country's leading healthcare experts, the Bloomfield Hills Board of Education Superintendent Administration must enable our K-38 students to in-person learning no later than mid-January. Based on the latest council from top healthcare experts, there should be a commitment to a full-time face-to-face offering for our K-38 students no later than second semester. The current metrics preventing this from happening must be revised to metrics that keep our kids in school only. When circumstances at a specific school require closing, should virtual learning be considered? Also, students that are required to quarantine must have a way to participate in school daily. Thank you. Okay. I'm a third grader at Conan Elementary. I really, there's a, there's a pointer there. I really wish we can go back to school. With online, school is so hard to listen. I get distracted with other tabs on my Chromebook in the morning. We wait a long time for everyone to join the class. At school, I can listen better. It is very noisy at home. My brother's loud. The breaks are at times different from mine because they're in middle school. I love being at school because it's easier and there are no distractions. But online school, most people can't find worksheets they need. Some, some kids don't pay attention and teachers have to spend so much time getting their attention. At school, I love having recess with friends. While in virtual, I can't see any of my friends. For specials, kids don't do any activity. They're just sitting around. When my teacher says to read, some kids don't read. They just click through the pages on Epic so they look like they are reading. After break time, kids don't know breaks are over and we have to wait a long time for them to rejoin. In school, if you're doing the work, the teacher would notice. Please consider bringing elementary, elementary students back to in-person education soon as possible. My husband and I both work. It cannot help our children are remote learning during the day. My first grader cannot read and struggle significantly with remote learning. My fifth grader has a hard time staying on task with remote learning. It's so important in this age, a group of students build a strong educational foundation. Remote learning will have lifelong impacts in this generation. Hello, we need the kids to be back in school. Studies show that kids are not spreaders. The kids are doing a great job following directions. So many people have pulled their kids out to send them to private schools. That's going to make BHs schools not number one. I have already pulled out one child and had my other kids on waiting list. Our values in homes will go down. People will not want to move here for our schools anymore. Please, please, the kids need to be in school. Let the parents decide. We have two choices. We all have a voice. Let us decide. Your only job is to make decisions about education, not health. Our president, government, and health department all say K-38 should be in school. Doctors around the country say the kids need to be in school. Who are you to say you know more than them? Why are seven people making decisions for thousands of people? Maybe instead of thinking you know more than everyone else in the world, you let US parents, you let us parents decide. Please address the incredible negative aspects this has had on our kid. BHS students and families, BHS is losing. We are. We all are. Dear Board of Education, please listen to the experts at CDC, Dr. Fauci, medical doctors, psychologists, our local government, federal government, and the WHO are all saying to let these kids go back to school full-time. What more do you need to be convinced? What is happening is hurting our children. Please spend time, look at the data, read articles yourself. If New York City can do it, Bloomfield Hills can do it. Time is reasonable and logical. Stop using fear to dictate your decisions by data. Is that it, Dave?
That is it.
With that, we will go to Board Business. Approval of lease agreement 281 in Enterprise Court. Why, can I get a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the five-year lease agreement totaling $294,936 and authorize the superintendent to finalize and execute the lease.
Do I have support? Support?
Support.
Any, okay. Any discussion?
Well, point, point of teacher, Coach Cook was going to talk about the matter. Is that going to happen before we vote or, or after we vote?
After we vote. Discussion is, yeah, so he's not presenting, he's just going to make a comment afterwards. Any discussion? Okay. With that, Jennifer?
Mr. President, I would love to share from the robotics team what they think about this proposal.
Kelly, would you like to make a comment as part of our discussion?
Yes, I would. For those that don't know me, I am Kelly Cook. I'm the coach of the Bloomfield Hills Robotics Program. As many of you are aware, our students from our high school team have won multiple worldwide recognitions in our team that the other 3,500 robotics teams should emulate. And all of our district's middle school teams, the team there at the top of the states, we win awards too, are very proud of the set. And much of that success has been due to the fact that it's support that the Bloomfield Hills schools, that's given volunteers that make up the robotics programs, those funds and facilities, which for the past six years, of course, has been at the loss or winning, or ban, shop wing. I personally appreciate the speed and compromise that went into finding a new location for us. It was very good on this. The high school team will be able to make do with getting half of the Franklin Road facility for this, especially with, now that we have the office space up front, because that's, a lot of what we do isn't just building stuff, the strategy and CAD and everything else. We can't be next to a lot of cheap. So this actually, I do appreciate everything that's been going on. And I do ask that you board members vote for the still your plans for the new lease because that will give us that facility. That being said, I do have some comments that with only getting half of Franklin Road facility, the new space is only going to be half the size of our current space. As a high school team, we will make do with this. But there really isn't that much space available for the middle school side. In fact, there's almost none. We can do it this year because we have COVID, we have very reduced numbers with the middle school side, unfortunately. But that will, I expect to come back, and we have 11 teams, what we expect to have. And in the two rooms back there, there's not really room. We built our program by having high school students successfully mentor elementary and middle school kids, preparing them, making them decided to join the high school team, and being co-located at loss was a major factor contributing success. And to be honest, this growth path created is why first national putter schools team, they're all a pain. And so I just ask that you don't make this vote the final step. All of the 300-plus kids in the K-12 robotics need a space that they can share things and learn together and keep on doing this. The middle school is getting new schools, but don't forget about their major scheme learnings, their robotics programs. The students are the important ones. That's all I want to say.
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks, and also everything you've done and, you know, all the volunteers for the robotics program. It's a bunch appreciated. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay. With that, Jennifer?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Cynthia?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Motion passes 7-0. Again, thanks for all you do, Kelly, and everyone in the robotics program. With that, I will call the meeting to adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.